Welcome to Your Vote Counts, a candidate's forum sponsored by Capital Community Television and the League of Women Voters of Marion and Polk Counties. My name is Bea Epersen, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization that works to educate ourselves and the public about government issues. We do not support candidates, but we do provide a forum for them to become known to their communities. In this program, we'll present the candidates for the Polk County Commissioner, position two. They are alphabetically Dan Jaffray, Steve Pickering, and Craig Pope. Our format for this forum is as follows. Each candidate has three minutes to give an opening statement to introduce himself and to outline his top three priorities if elected. Following that, each candidate will be given one and a half minutes to answer questions that have been prepared by League members on current issues. The candidates were not given the questions ahead of time. At the end, the candidates will have two minutes to make a closing statement in which to state the legacy he would like to leave if elected to office. Prior to this, we drew straws for seating and question order, so we'll begin with Mr. Jaffray for his three-minute opening comments.
I'm Danny Jaffray, asking for your vote for Polk County Commissioner. I have the knowledge, experience, and education to do the job, and I believe that I bring the leadership and team-building skills necessary to help move Polk County forward. I was born and raised in Polk County, and other than time away while on active military service, I have lived in Polk County my entire life. I attended school in Monmouth and Independence, graduated from Central High School. I graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree from Oregon State University, entered the U.S. Navy, attended Naval Flight School, became a naval aviator, and served as a pilot and operations officer throughout the world. I also earned a law degree at University of Oregon School of Law. I am married. I met my wife when she was attending Western Oregon State College, now Western Oregon University in Monmouth, and we recently celebrated our 28th wedding anniversary. We have three grown children, one daughter who lives and works here in Oregon, one daughter who is living overseas where her husband, an Air Force officer, is stationed, and a son who is currently serving in the Navy. I currently serve on the Board of Directors of Lucky Mute Domestic Water Cooperative in southeast Polk County. I've been a board member there for over three years and board president the past two. I'm also chairman of the annual Independence Airport Memorial Day Tribute, which I invite you all to attend on May 26th Memorial Day. I also am a past secretary for the Central Alliance Club. I believe in the importance of public service, and I am running for county commissioner as a way to continue serving. Top priorities that I have for Polk County are supporting and enhancing the current jobs and employers who have worked hard and stayed here in the county and supported our economy, and also to help facilitate new employers with sustainable family wage jobs to the area. I would also like to help prioritize our county budget with emphasis on what we need, and I would like to find a way to return our public safety departments, in particular the Sheriff's Department, to patrol and response levels that foster trust in government, which I believe is crucial to maintaining and growing our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaffray, and excuse me for mispronouncing your name. Okay, the next one will be Mr. Pope.
Okay. Hi, I'm Craig Pope. I'm Polk County Commissioner number two. I was elected in 2010 and have been serving faithfully for you all since then. I will tell you that I'm a Polk County resident and have been for all of my adult life, and have a wife and four kids, two of which that actually live in Polk County as well and have jobs and professional careers. I will tell you, since taking on this role after my election in 2010, that I wanted to focus on ag and forestry policy because I realized that Polk County is a natural resources county primarily. So I want to focus on the jobs and on the professions and careers that we know help our citizens thrive. So unfortunately, after the passing of a senior commissioner, in the first couple of months of my first year, I got the opportunity to take on more forest policy because that was his expertise. So I've been deeply embedded in forestry policy and maintaining the pathway that Polk County has been on to try to make sure that we get the best opportunities out of our natural resources that we have over many, many decades that helped offset the property taxes that you all pay. I've also been very passionate and interested in transportation policy and have picked up that role from the beginning and have been very engaged in transportation policy councils of different kinds and committee work, and have been very fortunate to have been appointed by the governor to one of those, which is a statewide policy with ODOT on access management. So that's basically driveways and roadways that access state highways. I've been very involved in economic development issues. I'm a board member with SEDCOR, Salem Economic Development Corporation, was a business member of SEDCOR before I got elected, so I bring my time there to make sure that we're working hard on jobs and economic development. I'm also an executive member of Job Growers, Inc., here in town in Salem, that focuses on jobs and skills development, work deeply with staff on water policy, and I'm very proud to have led some significant water policy for Polk County residents that will help support water needs out in the past 2050. I also am deeply engaged with public and mental health programs and Medicaid or Oregon Health Plan delivery systems. Again, my name is Craig Pope, and I ask for your vote for reelection.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Okay, Mr. Pickering, would you give your opening remarks?
Thank you, I'd be glad to. My name is Steve Pickering. I am the newcomer to this group of gentlemen, and I returned here in 2011 when I retired, when my wife retired to Polk County after a four-year absence. I moved to Coos County for four years with my new bride at the time, a lady I started dating in 1966. I have two children and 11 stepchildren or adopted children, and I have a new perspective for Polk County. I'm not one of those who went to school here, graduated here. I've lived all over the country. I bring a lot of new ideas. If you think about it, we've had the same thing in Polk County for several years, as our funding has continued to decrease, and it would be a good time now to bring in some fresh ideas. I hope that I can present those. We returned to Polk County specifically because my wife is from the two oldest families in Polk County, both Embry's and Guthrie's, which many of you will recognize, and that was the primary reason for selecting Polk County. After I returned here, I discovered there were some things going on in government, mostly in my city of Dallas, that I wasn't real happy with having been involved in politics and in local government previously. So I started attending some of the meetings. I had made the decision originally to run for Dallas City Council, but friends of mine came to me and said, "Look, we have some issues in the county. We're not happy with the current commissioners, and we'd like a new face there, someone with some new ideas and someone to bring forth something new." They believed I was that person. They asked me to run, and so I changed my mind and decided in February to instead run for Polk County Commissioner, position number two. It's a position that I hope that you will put me in. I've always wanted to serve. From the very earliest years as a Boy Scout, I served as a den chief and went on to become a professional scouter. Later on, I became a volunteer fireman, and I've served in many, many organizations as a volunteer. Currently, I'm a secretary of the Roads Radio Operators Association of Dallas as a ham radio operator, and it's only one of maybe two dozen positions I've served in over the years. I've been very involved in local government, not so much in Polk County, because again, I just returned in 2011. But I'm very familiar with the way government operates, what it does. I have two degrees. Recently, I did not return to school until 2004, and I graduated in 2007 with two different degrees, one in community service organizations, specifically Chicano/Latino Studies and Native American Law, and the second being in computer science. So knowing this, I hope that you give me a chance to be your Polk County Commissioner in position number two come May 20th. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll start with our questions, and we'll start with you, Mr. Pickering, then Mr. Jaffray, and then Mr. Pope. First question. If you are elected, what do you think your greatest personal challenges in carrying out your role?
My greatest personal challenge is going to be not having been a long-term resident of Polk County, but that might not be a bad thing. I believe that's going to be a good thing. It's going to allow me to bring fresh ideas that I've learned in other counties. I've always attended county and city functions, so I'm very familiar with the way other governments operate, and sometimes those are good things, sometimes they're bad things, but I've learned what the good and the bad are, and I hope that as the newcomer, that I can bring a fresh perspective to Polk County government.
All right. Mr. Jaffray?
I would say that my greatest personal challenge will be to get to know the folks who are doing the nuts-and-bolts work at Polk County. I do know quite a few people over there, but there are a lot that I don't, and I think that a challenge, particularly in the early days when you have a lot of things going on, when you first get into a position, getting to know folks and doing the things that make it worthwhile for them to do their job becomes a critical piece within the first six to nine months. So I think that's the greatest personal challenge I have, but I'm up to meeting that. I've done that quite a few times as an officer in the Navy and stepped into new positions many times.
Okay. Mr. Pope?
Okay, thank you. So I think my greatest personal challenge, if I'm reelected to another term, would be containing my frustration over funding issues. I mean, and I've been doing this now for over three years, and one of the biggest challenges to this job personally is just trying to learn how to have patience and not become frustrated with the process. It is a place where I can tell you, in my years in private sector business and making risk decisions on a daily basis and asking people to get things done, I've had to learn to deal with the frustration of the pace at which government works, and that is very, very true for funding elements of government. It takes a long time to move a target on funding, and so I've had to learn patience, and I'll have to learn more patience. But I also have found that, you know, having taken opportunities for leadership training gets me in a place where I understand better the process of my job and how I get where I need to be in the future. So again, just learning how to be patient.
Okay, thank you. We'll go with Mr. Jaffray, then Mr. Pope, and then Mr. Pickering on this next question. What funding issues would you put first, and what would you do about them? And what budget cuts would you make?
That's a big question. Funding issues, I think primarily the ones that I think are the most important. I'd like to see a return in funding to where we can get our public safety sector back to the level they were a few years ago, so that we can have a fully-staffed Sheriff's Department, a fully-staffed District Attorney's Office. How do we do that? That is a big question, and I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. We have not really a deficit right now, but we have certainly had to make a lot of cuts the county has in order to keep the budget even. So how do you change that? Well, first off, you have to decide what are your priorities, and, you know, what do we need? It needs to be the question before we say, "What can we afford?" What do we need? Well, we do need to make sure that we've ensured a level of public safety that is conducive to conducting business and making people feel safe within the county. So I think that by prioritizing and reanalyzing where we're spending money, that that would be the way to go about doing it.
All right. Mr. Pope?
Thank you. So again, I've been doing this for over three years, so I have a pretty good idea where the priorities are with regard to funding and spending, and they're clearly two different things. Spending, you know, is where you make your cuts, and this county, our county, has done a remarkable job of maintaining its priorities and making the cuts that are required to balance the priorities the best possible it can, given the funding issues that we have. Again, I'm always challenged with people that come forward and say, "We want to put it all back," but they don't have a solid way of bringing the funding forward that we once used to have to pay for these things. So when you lose 42% of your general fund discretionary fund dollars that you used to fund, you know, those primary services, which include public safety and law enforcement, that's very challenging. Polk County has done a remarkable job over the last five-plus years of trimming, making the cuts where they have to, and still maintain the vital services even beyond public safety. There are other things that our constituents out there need besides just public safety, but clearly that's a priority for me. So but one of the things that's a big deal to me is to make certain that we, by law, have to keep a balanced budget, and we need an ending fund balance or a contingency that keeps us safe, so we cannot spend ourselves down to zero.
All right. Mr. Pickering?
Well, thank you. This is probably going to be the toughest issue, not only in this campaign, but to the county, not just now, but in several years. I have a background in corrections, a very strong background. I was a shift commander, interim shift commander, and a corrections supervisor at the Arizona State Prison. It's something that I bring, a knowledge of jails and corrections and how they operate, plus law enforcement. I started my interest in law enforcement back in 1979 with taking corrections classes at SWAC in Coos County and taking police science classes at various times throughout the years. I want to say that one of the first things I would do would be look at seriously privatizing the jail and to turn this back over to corrections professionals rather than sworn deputies. I understand our deputies are not currently certified to be patrol deputies, but we can easily certify those deputies, return them back to the streets, and increase our patrols, while at the same time, if we put corrections professionals into the jail, something that people don't seem to be for, including our sheriff, you would find that you'd spend much less money and have a better-run jail operation. So that's one of the first places I would look, is how to refund the jail and fund the Sheriff's Department in different ways and staff the Sheriff's Department in different ways.
All right. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Pope, then Mr. Pickering, and then Mr. Jaffray. Describe the Polk County plan for natural disasters and what additional steps you feel are necessary to ensure our readiness.
Wow, that's a monster question. Polk County plan. Well, the book is about that thick, so I couldn't begin to dictate to you what the plan is without that reference in front of me. So it's not something that I memorize, and we have staff, emergency management coordinator, who has responsibility for that task and for keeping all of Polk County's employees that are relevant to carrying out that plan up to date. Generally speaking, we joke about it a little, but in all seriousness, one of the things that we endorse as a board of commissioners is to stay out of the way. As an elected official, one of the smartest things we can do is be there, be a part of carrying out the emergency management plans that are coordinated with agencies all around us, by the way, including the city of Salem, but to be there to help take care of the logistics needs of our emergency management coordinators and the staff that have to carry out those things. I would tell you that with regard to anything beyond where we are today, everything comes down to money. You can always have more if you can pay for it.
Mr. Pickering?
Well, this is a great question for me to answer, since I have not only been involved in disaster preparedness for several years, about 12 years now in the state of Oregon. I also assisted in writing some of Polk County's disaster plan as a ham radio operator. It's an integral part of that plan. I know Dean Bender quite well. He's the gentleman who is currently in charge of that in Polk County. They've got a good plan. There are areas that could be improved, better use of volunteer time. At this time, not all volunteer time is being used in the best ways. Being a ham radio operator myself with ICS training, MCOM I, MCOM II, and several other type of emergency training, I would, and also as a fireman myself, I understand also, Mr. Pope was a fireman at one time, I understand disasters, and I understand what is going on in Polk County with the disaster plan, both locally and statewide and national. I have been very, very involved in it, and I would, as a commissioner, remain involved in that and look at better ways to reduce costs by using more volunteers who are there, ready, trained, willing, and able to participate, not just in the communication side of it, but in search and rescue, several other areas. We have individuals who are very involved, as volunteers, and don't cost the county anything, and they're just as well-trained.
Mr. Jaffray?
Thank you. Well, I also know that there's an awful lot in the disaster plan that I don't know, and I won't try and fool anybody with the idea that I have a vast knowledge of it, other than to say that I have been heavily involved in disaster planning, disaster preparation when I was on active duty in the service, responded to several natural disasters, earthquakes, typhoons, hurricanes, both as an operational pilot and then I was also a team leader. What I would like to say is that everything can be improved, and there are good folks I know that are involved in the volunteer aspects of Polk County search and rescue. You've got great folks who work in the Sheriff's Department, real professionals, as Mr. Pope said. You know, you've got to defer to the professionals, and that's what I would do. I would certainly give my input when asked, and maybe occasionally when it's not asked if I think I have the right answer, but I won't get in the way of the professionals doing their job.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Pickering, then Mr. Jaffray, then Mr. Pope. How will you meet the safety needs of the county with reduced staff?
I don't think the safety needs of Polk County can be met with reduced staff. I think it's very important that we figure out new ways of funding the Sheriff's Department with the needs that they have. We're going to have to look at being tougher with PERS and contractual obligations that the county has made over the years with the public employees. At this point in time, the average Sheriff's Department employee, whether it's a janitor or whether it is the sheriff himself, it averages out to $116,000 per employee at all levels. A large portion of that goes to PERS and retirement and benefits. For example, the employees do not pay their share of their insurance, nor do they pay their share of PERS, and that's something that needs to be negotiated. It would reduce the cost to the county tremendously. Currently, even the commissioners do not pay, because they are county employees, they do not pay their own share. So as far as safety in the county, the only way we're going to do it is by properly funding the Sheriff's Department, and we're not going to be able to do that if we don't get this $116,000 per employee under control.
Mr. Jaffray?
Well, I would concur that it's very difficult to meet the safety needs of the county with the reduced staff that is currently in place. However, I believe that the folks who are in charge of those departments, particularly the sheriff and the DA, are doing an outstanding job with what they've got. Term we often use in the military, and I'm sorry to have to say this, was always "do more with less." I wouldn't necessarily expect that. There's a point where you actually start losing folks, and if not physically, mentally, they just become so tired they can't complete the task that's given to them. So how do you do it? Well, I think that the question would be more a question of what do we need that we have to staff? And then what can we, how can we piggyback that or get other agencies involved in helping to perform those tasks, assisting as they can, and also what kind of technical improvements can we make that will save the county money in the long run and also enhance public safety?
All right, thank you, and Mr. Pope?
Okay, well, yeah, this is a very complex issue, and it's very challenging, and we hear a lot about it. It's become very public these days. I can tell you, if you ask the sheriff, it's just one word, and that's money. I would argue with those that say that we don't negotiate well enough with employees. Those employees have representation, and under law, we are required to negotiate with them, and they have to have wages under law that are competitive with other agencies. One of the reasons why we have a shortage in patrols today is not because we've made cuts, but because those people have moved on to other places that offered them better wages and benefits than we can. So we will be going backwards significantly if we think that we can take away anything more that professional law enforcement people are being offered right here in the city of Salem, city of Kaiser, and neighboring counties, and even the tribe. Our patrol deputies are going to all those agencies. We had one, the city of Burns beat us out of an employee. We had an employee leave to go to the city of Burns. So that's a challenge for us when we talk about negotiating wages. So my job is to continue to look for pathways for better funding so that we can put those folks back to work.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jaffray, first on the next question, Mr. Pope and Mr. Pickering. What changes in meeting the mental health needs of the county do you see? Mr. Jaffray?
I think that one of the changes I'd like to see is perhaps moving mental health professionals into younger demographics, perhaps having specialists that can be involved with the schools, help prevent things that might happen there, and hopefully provide that service so that in the long run, whoever needs help gets it earlier than later, which in turn would cost less money. So I think earlier intervention is important, earliest possible intervention is important. So that's one of the primary changes I'd like to see.
Thank you. Mr. Pope?
Well, this is something I happen to know a little bit about. Again, in my experience as a commissioner, over the last two years for sure, I've been deeply embedded in mental health and public health issues. I'm a director for a coordinated care organization here in Polk and Marion County, sit on the board as a director for that CCO, and one of its primary mandates under the Affordable Care Act is to take care of mental health issues in counties. But counties are mandated by law to deliver mental health systems, what we call Safety Net. Polk County has an outstanding team of people that deliver mental health needs in crisis intervention for mental health needs that excels in our region. And so one of the biggest issues we have is access, and, you know, we need to make sure in order to have the appropriate intervention for folks that need it quickly is to have access capacity. Polk County has great access capacity, and we stand very proud that we have access capacity that's beyond what our neighbors do as a general rule, and we coordinate that access with private sector clinics as well.
All right. Mr. Pickering?
Well, I'm not a mental health professional, but I have sat in, just recently, on the budget hearings in the county, and I heard from the mental health department. I'm beginning to believe sometimes that we are turning mental health into an industry. I have to ask, how many of our clients are served by multiple agencies within the county that we could maybe, as commissioners, direct the health department to identify those clients and see how many we could reduce? Although, most of our mental health money does not come out of the general fund. It is passed through money, and financing it, it isn't something that we do directly. It is mandated, and we do receive the money from other sources, and we just use that money. But I believe we could better serve if we were to identify those clients that are being served by multiple agencies and reduce those numbers of agencies that are serving them and to one group, find a way to do that in the county. Also, I understand we're serving a lot of Marion County clients who are coming over. We need to identify those clients and see that they are returned to Marion County where their services should be provided. Some of that is a convenience because we are a smaller county. It's much easier to get time and scheduling. So it's something that we need to direct our health department to do. Changing the programs, I don't see us changing much. We are required to do most of them, but there's things we can change within the programs to better serve the clients themselves.
All right. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Pope, then Mr. Pickering, and Mr. Jaffray. What are some ways that you see to improve public interest and participation in county government? government?
Well, one of the ways to improve, in fact, we've all talked about that, is trying to find an opportunity to have a group like this film or tape our meetings. And, you know, unfortunately, because of the fact that we have staff in Polk County that have to attend these meetings, it's very challenging to have Board of Commissioners meetings after work hours, because you generally have to pay people that work for you that need to be at those meetings overtime to do that. So that's one of the reasons why we have those meetings during the day. I do hear about it from time to time from people that say, "Well, if you only had those meetings, you know, later in the evening." So that's a problem with all public agencies. So I think one of the ways that we can improve having folks involved is having CCTV, for example, or a group like CCTV involved in what we do. And my guess is you're going to hear more about that.
Okay. Mr. Pickering.
This is a subject that I have actually broached with the county commissioners, and they seem to be open to it, to have CCTV come in and film it. We'd have to then also talk about distribution amongst the various cable networks. Something that I think is really important that Polk County is not currently doing, and I'll use Dallas as an example, there's other places in the county and other counties I've lived in, they don't publish any of the information that the county commissioners are using to make their decisions prior to the meeting. In fact, quite often, you have very terse, short descriptions in the agenda about what they're even going to talk about. So the public often doesn't even know what the issues are. I've heard it said in a commission meeting that if the public wants to know, they can come to the meetings. Well, how do they know what's even going on at the meetings? There are ways. The city of Dallas, for example, publishes every single document that is used as a decision-maker during a meeting, during a public meeting, is published online at the same time the agenda is published, so that anyone can go and look at a liquor license application or an ordinance or any of the other things that government does and make the decision, do they want to be there and participate or just listen to what is going on in the decisions that will affect them in their county.
Mr. Jaffer.
Well, aside from concurring with both of these gentlemen on the CCTV and having that type of access and web access, I think that one of the other ways you can improve public interest is to invite them in. And I'm not saying that that's not done, but it's one of those things that you just have to keep working on. And I know that from my work on the Luckamute Domestic Water Cooperative Board that, you know, trying to get folks to a meeting to, and they're in the evening, as Craig well knows, they're in the evening, and it's, you want people to be interested and show up for those sorts of things. So you've got to invite people in, you've got to let them know that there's something worthwhile for them to participate in, and don't leave them hanging. Let them know that what they're doing, what they're saying is important, and utilize that as a resource. And if you have to go to them from time to time, you go to them from time to time, and you let them know that their opinion's important, their viewpoint's important, and they, we need that new set of eyes on the issue. So go ahead and invite the folks and have them say what they will.
Okay. Our next question, Mr. Pickering, Mr. Jaffer, and Mr. Pope. How do you see that infrastructure needs can be met?
Well, if you're talking about infrastructure, as in referencing like our roads and our bridges, for one thing, I'm a supporter of another bridge connecting West Salem with Salem on the east side of the river. That's a very important part of the infrastructure that is missing in Polk County. Right now, the one bridge is underutilized, the one in Independence, because of the highways that's on the other side that goes into Salem. And where the bridge is needed has been met with a lot of opposition. The county needs to get stronger on seeing that that bridge becomes a reality. Also, we need to stop deferring maintenance on our buildings, or it's going to, we've got to find the funding somewhere to do the proper maintenance so that property and buildings belonging to the people of this county don't deteriorate to the place where they are much more difficult to maintain in the future or need major maintenance or even replacement. So it's something we have to look at. Also, in infrastructure, we need to look very hard at what we're doing with contractual agreements with our, has technology changes with our cable companies, our phone companies, our utilities that are using the various right-of-ways in the county. It's another infrastructure that is very important to us. Thank you.
Mr. Jaffer.
Thank you. I also agree that we need to come up with another way to get across the river, particularly to move things from Polk County out to the I-5 corridor. Obviously, that's one of those infrastructure needs that needs to be met. That's not going to happen with just the county pushing it either, on either side of the river. It's not going to happen with just the state supporting it. That's a big project. It's going to take a lot of money, and people are going to have to be invested in it, not just within this region, but within the state and perhaps some federal money as well. Also, the, to maintain our structures that we have in Polk County, things like the courthouse and the academy building and other facilities that we have, there is a certain amount of money that's put on for maintenance, but it's probably not, in these days, it's probably not adequate to meet the deterioration rates. So eventually, we're going to have to come up with funding in order to specify that those needs need to be met, particularly upgrades to the courthouse and things like that. That's going to be a requirement of all citizens of the county to take care of. So I think that with, sorry, I saw the light go off. I think, that's fine.
Mr. Pope.
Well, one and a half minutes to answer this question isn't even remotely close to enough to answer the depth of that question. But I am very invested in infrastructure development and maintenance for Polk County, and it goes well beyond roads and bridges. But I can tell you, roads and bridges are what strike at the heart of everybody on a daily basis when they're commuting. Just for the record, I am the Polk County representative on the third bridge, Salem River Crossing Oversight Team, and so I am committed to that, though I do explain to people on, and quite often, this is a long-term legacy project, like everything else we do on major roadway projects. They have become legacy projects because of the way they're funded and how long it takes to work with the federal government to get those things done. To the building issues, Mr. Jaffer is right, it takes a long time for us to get these maintenance pieces taken care of because of the fact that we have to apportion some dollars beyond just maintenance for repairs and upgrades. But I will tell you that we just spent a significant amount of money in the last couple of years on the academy building in Polk County, and because it was crumbling and falling apart, and so we did make commitment to get that done and bring it up to code. So there's, but I can tell you, we have water issues and sewer issues and all those things that everything will take more investment in the future.
All right. That's all the time we have for questions. The candidates will now have two minutes for closing statement, and we'll begin with Mr. Pickering.
Okay. We're going to go back to a couple of things that we've talked about today. One, Mr. Pope has referenced several times, the various committees and organizations and groups that he belongs to. Any commissioner that you elect is going to become a part of those very commissions, either by volunteering or by being appointed to them. So I find that to be a good point, but it's something that anyone who serves you is going to do. I also want to address the, another question that came up at the very beginning. Yes, I am the newcomer, but maybe we need some new ideas here in Polk County. And living here, your entire life does not necessarily make you the best person to serve. So I realize that I've just brought up a couple of negative points, but I think it's points that the voters have to look at. Do you want to continue with what we've had in Polk County for years that has gradually, at best, gotten worse, such as our sheriff's department, our patrols? And that's been under the current local government that we have. So you need some new blood, new faces to step into the positions and see if we can't do a better job. I have a strong background in management. I was a corporate manager for a company called Neo Industries, but the last 10 years I worked, right up until I retired, I'm familiar with the budgeting process, not only in my work career, but also in government as a budget committee member with the Coospe County Airport District. So I think that it's time now to look at what can we do the next four years that's different than what we've done, because what we're doing now obviously isn't working. We need new funding sources without new taxation. We've had enough taxes. It's time to move on and find a better way to fund, whether that's creating something such as possibly the independent state airport becoming a county airport. It's just an idea. I don't even know if it can be done. But it's ideas like this that I bring. We don't have a dump. We don't have many of the things that other counties have for revenue.
Mr. Jaffer.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate in this forum. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for participating in this important aspect of democracy and voter education. Thank you. It's great to be here. And as I noted earlier, I am a believer in public service. I believe it's a great way to help our community, work together to remain strong and viable. I personally applaud all those who can take the time to give back in this way. That includes everybody in this room. Our county has serious issues that need to be addressed. I'm ready to get to work. I enjoy being a team player, and as a public servant, I would rather be involved than sit on the sidelines. I'd appreciate your vote in this county commissioner election so that I can take on those issues like the budget, public safety, that concern us all. What I would like to look back on as achievements at the end of my term, stable funding that meets the needs of the county, full service of our public safety departments, and a record of long-term planning for Polk County's future. And while I ask for your support and vote, please take a look at all the candidates, their records, and their aspirations for Polk County. Make a decision, and most importantly, cast your vote and return your ballot by May 20th. Thank you again for your time, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters.
Thank you. Mr. Pope.
Thank you. And also, thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. I do enjoy and appreciate the opportunity for outreach and to have a conversation with citizens about what they need. You've heard a number of different things here today about ideas and aspirations to do things, but I will tell you that I'm pragmatic. My whole history has been in business, ag, and forestry, and I understand that, you know, you can only do what you can afford to pay for. So I try to base everything on the ability for us to perform based on the dollars that we have. But to the issues that touch West Salem and Salem voters, I want to, once again, say that I've been a persistent advocate on goals to fix major road issues, for example, that affect everyday lives of Polk County citizens. I want to share, as I have, I think, in some editorial pieces, that one of my achievements in this first term is to secure funding and agreements with ODOT to fix Doakes Ferry Road at Highway 22, which is a horrible intersection that has cost many, many lives. I've also been deeply invested in the legacy project of Highway 22 at 51 interchange, and am very proud that I have been an integral member in securing now $8 million that is going to work this year, starting this year, to move that project forward another step. That also includes some money that's going out near the casino at Highway 18, almost $5 million that my team helped secure in 2013 to move that project forward. So I've also made my political investment to be the representative for Polk County on that Salem River Crossing and on the Oversight Team, and it's a very controversial project, and I know that it's hard for people to step up and do that, but I've taken that. So I am Craig Pope. I am your Polk County Commissioner in position number two. I'm asking for your vote for my reelection on May 20th. Thank you.
This is all the time we have. You've been watching Your Vote Counts, a candidate forum for Polk County Commissioner, position two. We hope you watch our other candidate forums, and please see CCTV website for time and dates. These forums are a public service to voters to become more acquainted with candidates who hope to lead our city, county, and state government in the coming years. Ballots will be mailed on May 1st and must be returned by May 20th. We urge you to exercise your right to vote. This is Bea Epersen for the League of Women Voters and CCTV, thanking you for watching Your Vote Counts.